Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Marked the meeting open at 7:01 PM. At this time, we'll move on to public comments. Is there any public comments? Just come forward, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Detective Arturo. My address is 95 Mountain Road. And I'd like to know why we're trying to get rid of our animal shelter. I don't understand. I pay taxes here. I live here. I get to vote for you. I don't get to vote on that. I've called the animal shelter multiple times in the five years I've been here. They've helped me with many things. They probably care more than any other animal shelter I've been in contact with. They make sure they place these animals into the proper homes. They don't just give them away to anybody. You've got tons of volunteers from the industrial area that come down and walk these animals. I don't understand. It's not breaking our budget. A lot of our money doesn't go to them. More probably should, and you want to get rid of it. Why? And why do we not get to vote on that? I just want to understand. Can you tell me?
The board can't respond during public comment.
Okay.
Is there any other public comment?
On the Hughes, 5 Ansmore Road, I have the same complaint.
I'm sorry, your name again, I'm sorry.
On the Hughes, 5 Ansmore Road, Seymour, taxpayer, animal lover, work at the shelter. And I don't like the idea that we have no say in what happens to our animal, that we can have our animals shipped to Woodbridge. Is inexcusable. All right. They get better care whether they are. If you take up the donation, I bet the townspeople will turn around and donate to get that place fixed up, enlarged, whatever. Nothing was mentioned. As a matter of fact, this meeting was kept secret. It should be up to the townspeople to vote on any contract, not you seven.
Is there any other public comment?
My name is Joan Thomas. I live at 22 George Street here in Seymour. And I'm here in support of keeping what we presently have also. I think it's vastly unfair that you guys get to go into this executive meeting and make a decision that concerns the people of this town. I don't like it at all. I think it's very unfair. I don't think it's anything that we couldn't handle if you needed to have people vote on it or something. I really think it's very unfair, and we have a very good shelter. And the volunteers there, they give their hearts away. They love those animals. They take care of them. And it can't be that because of money, because from what I've heard, you're going to be spending money still on the animal shelter, but in a different way. It doesn't make sense to me. I hope someone will explain it afterwards and why you're going to be putting more money into it for another purpose. But it will be concerning animals, but you can't even spend the money that you need to take care of the animals that are there. It just doesn't make any sense to me. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Wendy Camp. I live in 12 Emma Street. My daughter and I volunteer every weekend. My daughter volunteers throughout the summer. She goes to Nanawag, which the town of Seymour pays for. She's an A-plus student. She has dreams of being a veterinarian. And she gets her SAE hours there. Not one veterinarian will give her a time of day. This is the only place. Otherwise, where is she going to get her hours? And she'll be kicked out of the program. I cannot believe, United States of America, that we are closed sessioning. I just don't understand. We get animals that are not, that have problems. We get cats that have no, that have problems. Excuse me. After a stay there, they're transformed. They get love. They get attention. They get behavioral modification. I'm a registered nurse. I see the care that's given. I am a, I was born and raised in Seymour. Left to go in the Air Force, came back, and I'm disgusted. Can you understand? Excuse me. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment?
James Thomas, 22 George Street in Seymour. I have only one question. Why not a referendum on this so that people can decide rather than having a closed session? Thank you.
Is there any other public comment?
Hi, everyone. Bob Koskowsky, Pearl Street, Seymour. I have a few things I'd just like to bring up in front of the board. Because things have been bothering me over the last few years. And I just felt like tonight, I just got to let it loose. And it's not criticism. It's really just comments that I see what's going on in this town. A lot of our history has been taken away from us. And I'll just name just a couple of things as far as the history goes. The chain that was in front of Town Hall. If you did anything, researched where that chain came from, you would be amazed. And I would hope that you would consider putting that chain back in front of Town Hall. That was part of our history. Another, another item is Veterans Park or Broad Street Park. I don't know what you call it today. But it was Veterans Park. That started in 1984, 2004, excuse me. Al Yagavane came in front of the board of selectmen that time and asked, because this town did not have a Vietnam or Korean War memorial in this town. We only honored First World War, Second World War, and the Revolutionary War up at French Park. Back in 1988, we built monument, yeah, 1988, we built the monument up at French Park to honor all the wars. But just, this is just a little history of where, if it wasn't for Al Yagavane, we wouldn't have been honoring the veterans of the Vietnam War or the Koreans. He's the one that had done it. Memorial Day Parade, it was taken away back in 1994. And back in 2004, Al was one of six on a committee that put the Memorial Day Committee Parade back so that we could honor the veterans again. So he's done a lot of things for the town. And Veterans Park, I see, has put up something down there. I guess it, I went down to look at it. It's supposed to have fish and bow and arrows and stuff like that, but I couldn't see that in it. It just looked like a piece of metal with a bunch of cutouts. But it probably is fish and stuff on it. But I was wondering where the lightning rod was, because it is metal, and there should be a lightning rod on it. But I would hope you would, you would keep that park the way it is. Al and a committee worked and volunteered, and very few tax dollars ever went into this park. We had a bridge, I don't know if you remember it. Keywrights made a bridge that was in one of our parades way back when. And we put it down there. It was a cover bridge resembling the old cover bridge before, many years ago, before my time and your time. And it went up to this, up on the hill there. The other thing is Public Works. We have over 80 miles of roads that we have to take care of. That's sidewalks and roads, drainage. And we have 14.7 miles in the town of Seymour. And yet, I see Public Works. And when I was first selectman, the reason why I bring this up, because when I was first selectman, all I had to do was make a call to the district manager from the state to come down and take care of their property. Right down here on Derby Avenue, we'd call them up. They would take up the litter. They would pick up the litter. They hire hundreds and hundreds of college students during the summer to do this. You see them along the highways all the time. Right over here, Exit 22. Here, our Public Works Department's up there cleaning it up. That's the state's job. We pay a lot of state dollars, and I would hope they would do it. And then we were sweeping 67. I never heard of that. You know how much it costs for one of them brooms on the sweeper? You're on the Board of Public Works. Them brooms are very expensive, and they wear out very quickly. We can't afford with our tax dollars to do state job. Very easy. Just call up the district manager. And in closing, I just want to say, the sign up on top of Maple Street that gives you directions, what businesses are up there, Silver Mine Industrial Park, you can't read it. The printing is so small, you really got to pull over to read it. I know I'm older. I don't wear glasses. I could still see pretty good, but you can't read that sign. I would hope that you would just correct that. And then, the last thing I wasn't even going to bring up, but it was brought up earlier tonight, is the Animal Control Shelter. We built that in 19, I mean, 2005. Reason why is because it was costing us a fortune to bring our dogs to Oxford, to Ansonia, all over. It's costing us a fortune. You could sign a contract now with another town, and it'll sound real good, but it's not going to be good for the residents. Because if they have to go all the way to Woodbridge now versus going right up here Silver Mine Industrial Park. And I know myself, me and my wife, we donate a lot of food for that animal shelter up there. We built the animal shelter to save taxpayers' money and make it convenient for the taxpayers and the animals in this town. So I would really hope that you will look at where that chain went and possibly put it back in the town, only because these, these are issues that are part of our history. If it's not broken, don't try fixing it. And there are a few things in this town that aren't broken, and you're trying to fix it. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? Name and address for the record, please. Yep. Yep, to the microphone, please.
Excuse me, no matter breath. I was here before. My name is Matthew Reichbart. Ah, catch my breath. I'm a barber in this town. I love this town. It's a pretty little town. I'm here for, to support the animal shelter. Also, I'm glad I could catch for the public comment. My opinion on the matter. I think it's important that this town needs an animal shelter. The people that volunteer. It's, I'm grateful to hear that people will volunteer and that the people, I adopted a dog from the shelter. I'm an animal lover. I support Desmond's Law, which now is, just got passed for animal, speaks for, it's a voice for animals. So I, that's a close friend of mine. And I love animals. I just think this town would be overrun with animals and people dropping off. Also, excuse me for catch my breath. I ran here. I was eating Chinese food right next to my old job. I love this town. And the point is that animals need, I think, need the community of Seymour. At least the animals that are abandoned here. The animals that are already here that need help. She's doing a great job, Ms. Ice. I volunteered there, like I said, and I'll do all I could for the town of Seymour to stay in Seymour. I love my profession in Seymour, and I love animals in Seymour. And thank you, everybody, for listening to me.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Is there any other public comment?
Good afternoon, Board. My name's Giovanni Ortiz. I live on 26 George Street. I'm simply, I'm here to support the animal shelter as well. I'm also a member of the Seymour Lions Club, and I know that members in our club. I know some of you are familiar with the work that we do around town as well. We also do partake and help out with the animal shelter. And we're just here, a lot of us couldn't be here tonight, so I'm basically a lone representative at the moment. But we just want to say that we'd love to, an opportunity to see the animal shelter kind of grow, be here in the community, have us all partake and be an integral part into what goes on there, including, as somebody said earlier, a little referendum. Hey, maybe give us the opportunity to say whether or not it's a good idea. I know you folks have looked at it fiscally. Try to look at it, see how it's going to benefit the town of Seymour. I understand that. But it goes a little bit deeper for the people who are involved here and the people who love that shelter, even those folks who don't know that there's a meeting going on this evening. All right? So I would just ask you, just please take that into consideration, because we do care. I know Ms. Ice has been very active in the community in helping us out with the animals and stuff like that. She always seems to do a very fine job. And we're very supportive of her. We appreciate the work that she does. And just want to say, just please take that into consideration. Also, I want to touch on a subject that Mr. Koskowsky was talking about earlier, sort of off this particular note. Any chance we can get some of this graffiti covered up when we come off the highway? It just annoys the hell out of me, guys, that sometimes I look at the same thing over and over and over again. So we're sitting here discussing how we're going to save money by sending our animals to a different town, okay? But we can't spend 20 bucks on a can of paint, for example, plus whatever the labor is to just cover this up. That really, really annoys me. Otherwise, I think you guys are doing a great job. I just really, really hate coming into this town. You get off the highway, and you see these, okay? All right, that bothers me. Side note. Thank you very much.
Is there any other public comment? Is there any other public comment? Ask one last time. Is there any other public comment? Okay, hearing no other public comment. We'll move on to item number four. Approved minutes from the May 17, 2016 regular meeting. Have a motion to do so. Motion by Nicole, second by Stephan. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Cheer votes aye. Motion passes 7-0. Next item on the agenda, item number five, first selectman's report. As you know, two weeks ago, before I went away, we went to Boston, myself, Tony Caserta, and Doug Thomas, and made our presentation to S&amp;P. We received our results back, and they reaffirmed the town's double A-plus status, which is their second highest level. And just some of the notes, and the report will be made available. A press release will go out tomorrow to the reporters that are here. But S&amp;P noted our very strong economy with access to a broad and diverse metropolitan statistical area. That's with our proximity to Waterbury, New Haven, and Bridgeport. Strong management with good financial policies and practices under our financial management assessment methodology. Strong budgetary performance with balanced operating budgets. Strong budgetary flexibility with an available fund balance in fiscal year 2015 of 9.5%. We've also had fund balances each of the, or excuse me, surpluses, I apologize, each of the last four years. Very strong liquidity with available cash of 12.3% of total government fund expenditures and 140.2% of governmental debt service. Strong debt and contingent liability position and a very strong institutional framework score. So as you know, we've been working very hard to get that rating up. We're certainly very pleased to do that today. We closed the first portion of the bond issues that we went through. As you know, we refunded and reorganized a good portion of our debt and also went out on some new debt, which, as we know, saved the town $600,000 this year and $500,000 next year, so. But again, if anybody would like to see the report, just let me know, and Roy and I will send off a copy to you. Okay, that closes the first selectman's report. Item number six, discussion, take possible action regarding Janeski Trust tax abatement application for 50 Cogwheel Lane and 33 Progress Avenue. Fred Masur, Economic Development Director, is going to make a presentation, and then we'll take it from there. So Fred?
Yeah, good evening. In front of you are two applications. First, one is a new construction at 33 Progress Road, where there's going to be a 73,000-square-foot new building, three-story. They'll be moving 170 employees from the main building one to this property. The estimated investment is $11,224,870. We are expecting more growth and employment with this property. As you know, Mr. Janeski has several buildings up at this campus. And currently, they are in Building One and really at a very tight quarters for all their different departments and programs that they offer. With this expansion, they're going to be expanding their departments that are currently in Building One. Over the last couple of years, they've increased their employment of 100 jobs were created. He expects that growth to continue with these expansion of the square footages being proposed in this application, so. The other application you have in front of you is 63 Silver Mine Road, also known as 50 Cogwheel Lane. There's currently a building that's expanding onto that property. There's a tenant in that facility currently. The new expansion will be approximately 38,000 square feet of new space, which currently will house 10 new employees that'll be created. And then again, there'll be future growth at this building that'll probably have a much higher number of employment. Mr. Janeski did not know the exact number, but again, just taking over past history, in the last two years, he had a employment increase of approximately 100 employees. That project is estimated at $4,861,529. So between the two, you're talking approximately $16 million of new construction to Seymour's Silver Mine Industrial Park. As we mentioned in past presentations, we are looking to hopefully rebrand this, because it's really become the new technology campus versus industrial. He's been a great corporate citizen to the town, and my recommendation would be to give a 100% abatement per our tax incentive package up to seven years, and I hope the board would agree to that tonight. To have our corp counsel begin to generate the agreement application and then to have it executed.
Fred, I know 33 Progress is still in works, and that's probably a year or so away from completion. How close are we on 63 Silver Mine, just to let the board know?
Yeah, I would say sometime this summer. I mean, when you start seeing the blacktop going in, it's not far from that point. There'll be some internal fit out that still has to take place. That's definitely going to be the quicker of the two projects, so. I don't have an estimated finish time. I know, speaking with the building department, who's been doing inspections there, and the assessment office, they both tell me that Progress is on track, on time. Both, all the construction that's going on has been done very well by the companies handling it, so I don't expect any delays in the opening of the building.
Any questions from board members? For Fred.
Just one quick one, just to kind of get some context. Maybe I missed it, Fred, but long-term, beyond the tax abatement period and everything else, what does this mean for the grant lists? Kind of give us some perspective.
It's a little difficult to say. I tried to get some numbers from our assessor, and he really wouldn't commit till the project was completed. So unfortunately, I don't have those numbers for you. But again, if you base it off of what the construction values are that are going into the projects, which totals 16 million, I think it'll be a substantial increase.
It's about 403,000 in tax revenue. Any other questions for Fred? Rich, any comments from you? Okay, so just to refer back to our tax incentive plan that went into effect in March 7, 2012. It has different sections, different things that it's, or different levels based on the size of the construction project. Also, the usage of Seymour laborers as well as jobs created. I think Mr. Janeski in Basement Systems has an exceptional track record of not only hiring in the last couple of years, but also using local contractors. In Section E incentive levels, if an investment is $3 million or greater, the property tax abatement level established by the Board of Selectmen shall be no less than 60% of such investment and no greater than 100%. And the abatement timeframe shall be no less than five years and no greater than seven years. So the decision of this board tonight is, number one, do we want to grant the tax incentive to Basement Systems or to Mr. Janeski? And then, at what level and for how long? Now Fred is recommending 100%.
Thank you, Fred.
I thought you guys put me on the hot spot tonight. I was like, what's going on here?
Now, we had, just so everybody knows, we had a circuit blowing talent today, so we had to shut everything down.
Okay.
So that's what, oddly enough, there was almost a fire in Fred's office of all places, so.
It's my birthday.
That's right, on your birthday. So Fred, your recommendation is 100%, so a full abatement for the full timeframe of seven years?
Correct. Also, any permitting fees?
Local.
Local fees, correct.
Any comments or thoughts on Fred's recommendation? If not, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the recommendation of our Economic Development Director, Fred Masuri, and to award a tax abatement to the Janeski Trust for property at 33 Progress Avenue and 63 Silver Mine Road in the amounts of 100% for seven years. Motion by Nicole, second by Anne Marie. Is there any additional discussion?
I'd say that the whole purpose of why we have this plan is exactly to go forward with these applications and really seriously think about and get the incentives for the people who are investing in our community long-term. John Conroy chaired that committee. He asked us to be on it. It's fulfilling the purpose of the tax incentive document.
Building businesses.
And bringing businesses, keeping businesses in Seymour.
Correct.
Yep.
I think with an investment like this, Mr. Janeski is locking himself in the Seymour long-term, which is certainly a good thing. Any other thoughts or comments? Okay, hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Cheer votes aye. Motion passes 7-0. But if you can reach out tomorrow to Mr. Janeski and let him know, and then we'll start all the paperwork process.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Fred.
Thanks, Fred.
Okay, item number seven, discussion, take possible action on the capital plan. In your packets, or actually handed out to you tonight, I apologize. You have, we have the long-term capital plan for the town of Seymour. Again, we are focusing on budget 2016, 2017. During the budget process, the Board of Finance, through referendum, put aside $300,000 worth of money to purchase capital. These are the recommendations that I am making to the town. So on the top, you see the road reconstruction for $150,000, building repair fund for $150,000, and mill rate stabilization fund. Those are actually cash items that are in the budget now, but I just wanted those to be here, to be tracked as part of the overall capital plan. But what I'm recommending is to replace a full-size dump truck for the Public Works Department at $205,000. A potential auxiliary building for Public Works in the amount of $50,000. Second payment of a piece of fire equipment, the small interior lot truck for the fire department at $9,347. And then on page two, if you skip down to technology, we want to add a backup appliance, obviously to back up our servers at $12,500. We need to do some rewiring in Town Hall for $5,000. An overall PC replacement program for the town, $5,000. Want to institute a key fob and camera system for each building in the town of Seymour for added security for our employees and our residents as well. With the four municipal buildings, I'd like to make an investment of $20,000 a year over the next four years, starting with Town Hall, which is by far the least secure building that we have. And then we'll add in, as always, $2,500 of interest costs for our capital program. Total expenditure, $309,347. So I wanted to introduce this to all of you tonight, give you the opportunity to review it. I will put it back on our agenda at our meeting two weeks from now, and we could take a final vote as to the direction you'd like to go. So if anyone has any other thoughts, ideas, suggestions, you can certainly ask them now, or we could do that in two meetings. Or, excuse me, in two weeks at the next meeting. So any questions, thoughts, or comments now?
No, I take a little bit.
Thank you very much. Okay, next item on the agenda is item number eight, which is executive session. And this is mislabeled. The reason we're going to go into executive session is we need to discuss an employee issue of a non-Semur employee. And out of protection for that person, we will be going into executive session to discuss that and the ramifications of that, so that way everyone is aware. I was not able to comment before, during public comment, but I can't say now to the folks out in the audience. Number nine, discussion, take possible action regarding animal control contract. That will be done in public session. That is not done behind closed doors. I will answer any questions that any board members have. I have asked certain board members to ask me specific questions, so that way some of the concerns that all of you have raised hopefully will be addressed, so that way that information gets out, so I just wanted to let all of you know. Executive session will probably be about 20 minutes or so. So when we do that, we clear the room. Everyone needs to wait outside. that, we clear the room. Everyone needs to wait outside. And then you'll all certainly be invited to come back in once Executive Session is over. And at that point, we'll move on to item number nine. So with that, I'll entertain, I'm sorry, Rich?
So it's a, the basis of the executive session is to discuss the personal matters involving the non-Semore employees?
Correct.
And you need to say that you want to have an executive.
Correct. I was just about to get to that. So I make a motion that we enter Executive Session at 7:31 PM, and the town will invite Town Council, Richard Beterla, as well as Tony Genovese from the Town of Woodbridge, who is their administrative officer and chief financial officer.
Hello.
Motion by Len, second by Nicole. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Cheer votes aye. Motion passes 7-0. We'll enter Executive Session at 7:31 PM.